I now call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for July 22, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station Channel 1303 and will be posted to the website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the "Live" and then on the 2025.07.22 City Council Meeting. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Breen?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow is absent. Alaskowitz?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here. We have seven members. We have a quorum. And if everybody would join me in a moment of silent remembrance, tonight we remember Jordan Elizabeth Labarre. She was the stepdaughter and daughter of Mr. Tim Shigru, who is our District Attorney. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Council Paper Number 12,005-05, A Petition from National Grid Project Number 311-29144, Requesting a Public Hearing for a New Jointly-Owned Pole Location on Union Street and to Lay and Maintain Underground Laterals Intersecting Public Ways As Required to Make Connections with Poles and Buildings. Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
This is Nick DeRose from National Grid. The location is 12 Union Street, North Adams. I'm basically here to answer any questions you might have regarding the pole location. We have a pretty busy intersection there, and we're adding some new businesses. I believe there's five going in that lot.
Maybe.
But, yeah, so, here to answer any questions.
Can you get some mic closer?
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, just go ahead. There you go.
Yes.
If you break it, we'll send you a bill.
Pardon?
If you break it, we'll send you a bill. Okay.
Yeah, National Grid, Pole 3-50. The poles are pretty busy over there with the other facilities that we have for the McDonald's and the Dunkin' Donuts, so we need to add a pole in order to introduce the underground lines for the new business.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Breen?
I have a question. There's sidewalks that go along there. Is it going to be in the sidewalk?
Yes. Yep, yep. It'll be in line with the existing streetlights that are there and the existing poles.
Okay. Counselor Shade?
Will the installation of this pole impede traffic at all while it's happening?
During the installation, yes. We have a police detail that we'll have for the day or two that they'll need to install a pole. Other than that, no.
Okay. Any members of the public that wish to be heard during this public hearing? Hearing done. At this time, I am closing the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, approval of the minutes. Approval of the May 12, 2025 Planning Board and City Council Joint Meeting Minutes.
Move to adopt or approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
What was the date?
May 12, 2025. It was the joint meeting between the City Council and the Planning Board. Counselor Fitch?
I'm just going to be abstaining because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. We have five yeas and two abstentions. Approval of the meeting minutes for May 13, 2025 City Council Meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? One abstention. Approval of the meeting minutes, May 27, 2025 City Council Meeting.
Still move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
You didn't get the June 10.
So those have to be postponed.
Right. Okay. For the June 10, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes, we'll need a motion to postpone. We don't have those available yet.
Move to postpone.
Motion to postpone and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for hearing the visitors? Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Michael Malazo, 91 Wheeler Ave, Clarksburg, Massachusetts. Some of you may think I'm a troublemaker. I'm here, I'm going to preach again. You're not in compliance with the grant assurances for multiple millions of dollars worth of grant assurances. Currently, you are not in compliance for probably 15 different items in this document that you guys signed two meetings ago. I'd gladly go over it with anybody who thinks I'm just a troublemaker and don't know what I'm talking about. I'm happy to sit with any one of you or all of you to have that discussion. Not being in compliance, at some point, the FAA or the state government is going to step in here and say, "Come into compliance or pay us our money back." You're putting the citizens at risk for millions of dollars worth of losses if you don't address this properly. And the chairperson signed this document without it being signed from the Airport Commission, knowing that you're not in compliance. I truly believe that's a felony to be signing documents that you know you're lying to the state and federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing the visitors? Council Paper Number 12,0393-2, In Ordnance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, referred to the Public Safety Committee, Postponed from the Meeting of June 24, 2025.
A motion to accept as amended.
Okay. We have a second. A motion and a second. Okay, let me go over the Public Safety Committee met last night. Mr. President? Counsel Blackmer?
Wouldn't the motion be passed through a second reading and published as required by law as amended?
Well, we need a motion to begin discussion.
Yeah, that would be the amendment. That would, that's the, unless we're not going to publish, unless we're just going to amend it and leave it there.
No, we're going to publish.
Then that's what the motion should be.
Okay.
Okay, I'll change it to the motion to move to a second reading for publishing.
As amended. All right, so motion to pass through a second reading as amended and publish as required by law. Does that satisfy?
Correct.
Second. Thank you. Okay, we have motion and a second. Okay. So, what we have done is, under Section 13.26.1 entitled School Zones, we are deleting the school zone at Kemp Avenue in the vicinity of Sullivan School. That was on the original paper. And also on the original paper, it was discussed to add a school zone on Hodges Cross Road in the vicinity of McCann Tech. When we met last night, we had a letter from the superintendent of McCann School stating that the students are no longer allowed to park in the city yard parking lot, and the need, he felt that the need for a school zone in that area was not necessary. So we voted last night to delete the school zone in the vicinity of McCann School. Moving on, Section 13.49 entitled Prohibited Parking on Certain Streets. The original paper has us deleting Bank Street, Easterly Side, as Bank Street doesn't exist anymore, and we are adding the following. Center Street, Southerly Side, from a point 172 feet from the Easterly Line to Marshall Street, and extending 106 feet in an easterly direction. Said area shall be for police car parking only. The original ordinance, which we'll be deleting in Section 13-50, allowed for that area to be 15-minute parking reserved for the registry business when the registry was located there. At some point in time, the signs were removed and the signs that police car parking only were erected. That is not reflected in our ordinances under this section, so this will catch up the ordinance to what is actually in place right now. And the rest of the document, 13-50, Parking Time Limited, will delete the time parking on Center Street, and it will also delete 15-minute limit on Houghton Street on the Easterly Side between Liberty and Brooklyn Street. 1350.1, to remind everybody, we're deleting Williams Street, Westerly Side, from a point beginning 160 feet northerly from the north curb line of School Street and extending 80 feet during the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday through June 30, 1994. That's no longer a school that was put in place when the daycare, I think it was childcare of the Berkshires was there. That's no longer there, so that area is not needed. And then we were going to add a no parking zone on East Main Street, beginning from the western side of the driveway at 238 East Main Street. That was the former Notre Dame Church Rectory, now the MCLA Advancement Office. It's going to extend 60 feet westerly during the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday because that is a limited sight distance issue when you're pulling out and trying to make a turn out of there. The parked cars in that vicinity prevent sight distance down East Main Street. Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions? Counsel Blackmer?
Thank you for the work on East Main Street, but I would say that most of East Main Street meets that requirement. If somebody's parked on the street and you go around them or in the other lane and people are coming down the hill and they don't see you, or they're coming around a corner, I mean, a good chunk, I know people live there and they want to be able to park, but it, most of East Main Street should be no parking. I know you didn't do that, but I think that's another step to actually get looked at.
Okay, thank you.
And they park on the sidewalks, too.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we have a motion to adopt as amended.
No, we have a motion to pass through a second reading as amended.
To pass through a second reading as required by law. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,00480, A Communication from Counselor Fitch Requesting Time to Discuss Water Safety and Quality in the City of North Adams, Postponed from the Meeting of May 13, 2025. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Counselor Fitch, do you have any updates?
Well, certainly. Just in March 11 is when I first put this on the agenda, and what I said at that time was roughly, if I remember correctly, several constituents have approached me just with concerns about the state of our water, you know, lack of understanding, or, you know, legitimate concerns as well of what could happen to our water supply. So I brought that under the agenda and requested a presentation from the administration about the state of our water. What are the challenges and what are we doing to address those challenges over time? And then it got pushed to the meeting of May 13, and now it has come back up tonight. And so I'm not sure where we are with that, but through the chair to the mayor, I suppose.
Mayor?
So we, I've worked with Mr. LaScavo, and I'm sorry, I thought I communicated this on the phone with you, Counsel Fitch, that we would like to come forward tentatively on August 26 for a presentation.
Let me re-say.
With some scheduling things and vacation schedules, we thought that would be a good time. So I'm hoping to add that to the agenda on August 26 for a presentation for Mr. LaScavo to talk about our water supply, where we are, where we're going, work that we're doing, work that needs to be done, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Fitch?
Just that is totally fine with me, but I just would hope for no further postponements if at all possible.
Okay.
So I would move to postpone this to the meeting of August 26, I believe is set.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of August 26. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Counsel Blackmer?
You filed the communication without objection.
Yes, I did.
But then we're continuing it.
Okay. I object.
So, basically, the motion to file without objection is, you're taking that off the table?
Okay.
Because we've continued it?
Okay.
Is my read on that?
Okay, so we'll, we have the communication, and at this point, I will not file this. We'll just have the communication, and we have a motion to postpone to the meeting, second meeting of August, which is August 26. Any, and we have a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Council Paper Number 12,00488, A Communication from Counselor Fitch Requesting a Discussion Regarding Sustainability Planning and Establishing a Sustainability Commission in North Adams, Postponed from the Meeting of June 24, 2025. And Counselor Fitch, do you have any updates on that?
Yes, certainly. Two weeks ago, the Community Development Committee had a meeting on, so that was Wednesday, the 9th of July, at 6 o'clock in this room. I think we had a fruitful discussion about this concept. Our new director, Maria Kozak of Community Development, was also there, talked about that with us as well. Just talked basically about, you know, is it too soon to create a sustainability commission? The general feeling in the room, and myself included, I think we all kind of agree that it probably is, but there were just questions about establishing goals and maybe working towards those goals and reporting out, you know, on a somewhat regular basis against those goals. And so, in the meantime, Maria Kozak has sent me a document that she pulled up, the North Adams Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plans, you know, like there is a plan from December 2020. My request, and what I would love to do is to refer this to the administration, probably for January, second meeting of January 2026, for just an update on that plan, update on goals and where we are against those goals. What progress have we made? Where do we still need to get caught up? So that was a motion to, yes, okay, thank you.
Motion to postpone to the second meeting in January?
Mm-hmm.
And we have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Counselor Fitch?
Actually, Counselor Shade, for personal mind.
Counselor Shade?
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable putting this off until then and bringing it back. I think it would be more appropriate to file now and bring it back then as a new paper when there's, we're going to have a potentially new council. It's going to be a new term. I don't think we should just push things off for six months to not deal with it. I think it would be better to have a new communication when the time is appropriate to start talking about this again. But if we're not taking any action now and we don't see action being available in the immediate future, it doesn't make sense to postpone it. It makes more sense to file and then have somebody introduce it again when we're ready to actually start working on it.
Interesting.
Okay, Counselor Fitch?
I don't believe, I don't perceive this as kicking this off for six months to not deal with it, but giving the administration enough time to develop the Community Development Office and to go through this report and to create goals and then to report on those goals. I recognize there may be a new council at the time, but I just, I do believe in setting a date so that it does actually happen with or without me if I'm not here. So that's where I was coming from. I'm totally open to different perspectives, however.
Counsel Blackmer?
If you were going to file it, I would file it without prejudice so that we can bring it back without an issue.
Okay. Counselor Alaskowitz?
I'm all set, thank you.
You're all set? Counselor Shade?
Yeah, I appreciate this coming forward and the want to address these kinds of issues, and I think it's really important. There's also a possibility that there could be a new mayor at that time, a completely new administration. We don't know what's going to happen. The other thing I would say is, at this time, I don't think we're ready to add any new boards or commissions when we're already looking at the Affordable Housing Trust and we already have so many vacancies on our current boards and commissions. So, while I think it's important to look at sustainability, I think there's better ways of doing it without holding a paper open on a commission and potentially creating a commission, I just think that when the time comes and those things are ready, it'd be better to move forward with them then, but I yield to the rest of the council on this.
Okay. Counselor Alaskowitz?
I'll just make a brief. I agree with Counselor Fitch. I mean, this is going to be in the works for the next few months, so I don't see the need for it to come back as a new paper, regardless if there is a new mayor or a council coming forward. This was originally initiated by Counselor Fitch, and it will be worked on until that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Blackmer?
I would also think that if there were updates or some work being done, that Ms. Kozak could update the Community Development Committee so that we could be in the loop and maybe meet, you know, maybe we kind of plan about meeting October, November, so that it does stay on the radar. I like the idea of having a paper that kind of says, "Yeah, we have to deal with this now." We may end up, like you said, there's elections, and we may not be here, and mayor may not be here, and things would change, but at least it would be there to kind of say, "Hey, this is important," is, I guess, is my view on it. And I know that we've had things that have continued into new administrations. I remember when an outgoing counselor proposed a sewer raid on his way out the door. So, you know, things happen. So I think it's important to kind of keep it as a ticker to say, "Hey, we're still here, don't forget about us," is my theory on it. But I'm not beholden one way or the other. But I vote first.
So does your original motion of postponing it to the second meeting of January still stand?
It does.
It does. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
You opposed?
Aye.
You said aye.
Sure.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor.
I yield to the rest of the council, so.
Okay, thank you. You were kind of late on the hands, so.
Just wanted to have the discussion.
Okay, very good. Council Paper Number 12,00504-1, Communication from President Sapienza Presenting His Listing of City Council Members to Serve on the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Codification Process. And I am going to file my communication without objection, and this was part of the codification progress, or process, and I have appointed to the committee Counselors Breen, Blackmer, and Shade, and Counselor Shade will act as the committee chair. Council Paper Number 12,00505, An Order Granting Permission for a New Jointly-Owned Pole Location on Union Street, Project Number 311-29144, And to Lay and Maintain Underground Laterals Intersecting Public Ways As Required to Make Connections with Poles and Buildings.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes, I'm completely in favor of this happening. I just ask that communication be put out when it does happen, so people can be aware of traffic on those days when those happen, because that is a very busy intersection, and shutting down or disrupting traffic there could be a big problem, so.
I'm sure there will be some type of notice out there.
As much public notice as possible for that time.
And for those inquiring minds that want to know, we have received a letter from Mr. LaScavo granting his approval of this project, and we also received the proper payment from National Grid to file this petition. Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Motion approved. Order approved. Okay. Council Paper Number 12,00506, Communication from Counselor Fitch Requesting an Update from the Administration on the State of Compliance for the Airport and Airport Commission. Counselor Fitch, excuse me, Counselor Fitch, would you like to speak on that, please?
Yeah, certainly. Believe it or not, I'm bringing this communication to put this communication to bed. We've heard so much about the airport and the potential of our being out of compliance for many months, and what I would love to do is to address this, to learn the facts and to put those facts out there publicly, so we can make adjustments if needed, and we can also stop talking about this if needed. So what I was hoping to do, and I've already chatted with Mayor Maxi about this, is to refer this to the administration. Mayor Maxi, I apologize, if we had talked about a return date?
August 26.
I've forgotten it. August 26, as well, okay, got it. So I would refer this to the administration with a return date of August 26 to have an update, ideally from Mass Aeronautics, you know, stating you are in compliance or you're not in compliance, or from our city solicitor, or something.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to refer this to the administration and postpone to the second meeting in August. Any further discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes, first, I want to thank Counselor Fitch for bringing this forward in this way. I think this is a great way to address the problems and to address what people perceive as problems and to get some kind of clarification. I do ask that in that, in that presentation, in that communication that we give back, that there be a written legal opinion attached as well. So I would make a motion to amend to also request that a legal written opinion, a written legal opinion is included in the presentation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to add a legal, written legal opinion to this, and we have a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? So we'll need to vote on this as amended?
Vote on the amendment?
Yeah, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Now we vote.
Now, back to the original, back to the original motion to postpone, to refer this to the administration. to the administration and postpone it to the second meeting of August as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,00507, Communication Number 118 From Mayor Maxi Presenting An Order Detailing Internal End Of Year Fiscal Year 2025 Account To Account Transfers. File the communication and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Maxi.
Good evening. This is a year-end activity we do every July to close out fiscal year 25. I will specifically talk about the transfers too, specifically the areas that we, for lack of a better term, ran short in. So the second part, we are taking money from accounts that have balances left in them and we are transferring them too. And I'm going to name the department and explain why the transfer is needed. So I hope that will answer any questions. So bear with me. So in general government, information technology, we are transferring $245,254.03, mostly because of infrastructure failures that we had throughout the year at City Hall, the transfer station, and the public safety connectivity from the OPD to us. The law department, we've talked about that throughout the year. We have had an increase of $38,302.43 for lawyer fees. The city council, that was driven by legal ads for advertising, $4,346.10. The administrative officer salary, $23,380.80. We budgeted for part-time in that, in fiscal year 25, but then we hired Maria as a full-time administrative officer. In tourism, $14,653.96. That was basically for marketing and building Discover North Adams and some other consulting work that wasn't covered under our EDAP grant. For police, that is driven by salary increases from contract negotiations and overtime, In public services, our wonderful snow and ice, $194,994.41. We had 40 snowstorms, most of them were ice. So we had that large storm in March which drove up a lot of our salt and sand costs and overtime. Engineering, $81,688.40. Projects to become shovel-ready specifically around Walnut Street and the YMCA roof, Ashland Street reconstruction, which was our part of a sharing grant, and our share of engineering for Beacon West and Tremont Street, which the construction was paid for out of a grant. For transfer station, $40,151.06, we had an increase in expenses for an increase in usage. For closure cost, $23,479. That represents a big push on us trying to close out tax title accounts and getting them into Land Corps and foreclosed out to get back on the tax rolls in a positive way. Highways, $91,864.79, which were salary increases. Public services, $40,019.76 salary increases. Parks and Rec, same thing, salary increases, $18,753 and change. Cemetery, $10,576.86 salary increases and overtime for Saturday burials. Windsor Lake, $6,004.1968, that was a salary increase. The library, $3,007.6323, that was because of a step increase which wasn't captured in fiscal year 25. Under unclassified, our workers' compensation went up $55,000. That was a mid-year adjustment because of a payroll audit. FICA city share, as salaries go up, our 1.5 contribution for Medicare goes up, so that was $6,181.83. And then employee training, we brought on a new auditor, a new procurement officer, which was Maria, as well as pushing now that COVID is over and there is more in-person meetings. And some of that was for the MMA conference, $4,105.49. So with that, we're asking for a transfer of 1.128,401.47. We do have that money available in our fiscal year 25, so we're asking it to sweep it out of the transfer from accounts to these accounts that I just described.
Okay, Counsel Breen?
A couple of questions, Mayor, through, through the chair. On the, on the police salary, it's the increase of the contract and overtime. Is that covered in the new fiscal one?
Yes.
So you're all set?
Yes, fully budgeted. If you recall, when we presented the new comp plans for police, fire, and highway, I had said I would come back at a later date with those salary adjustments, so that's what this is. I wanted to wait for the year to settle. So that is, and overtime. We, for one month, had five police officers out at once.
So we won't see the need for it?
Nope, because we've addressed it, the new contract in fiscal year 26.
And then the other one, the magic question, where did you find $800,000 in school budget?
So in the school budget, in their salary line, when we presented the budget and we did the split, there were some unknowns with grants. So with that, we got some additional grants thanks to Dr. Callahan, our new superintendent, to staff some positions, as well as we went without positions being filled. We advertised them, but we weren't able to fill them. So that left a good chunk of money in this, in the school salary line.
Okay. I think it was mentioned in Friday's New York Times, our chapter, Title I, that is $740,000, are we covered on that?
As of right now, we have not been affected by any cuts.
So if we do get that cut, what, where will we find the $740,000?
Well, we have money in our school choice account and we have some other pending grants that could supplement that. But right now, any, we've had two school programs that were under administrative review. The biggest one was the 21st Century, and that's been released, so we're happy about that. So we haven't felt.
So it looks like there's daylight? Because the Title I is so, so important.
It is. I'm, I'm not a betting lady, but I would hope that the administration would see the points.
If it doesn't come through, we'll be able to find the money?
We will always be able to support our students.
Okay.
My cut your salary or my salary, but we will support your students.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, I have a couple of questions as well. First, on the tourism line, you said that most of those expenses were due to marketing and the Discover North Adams website, but it's listed as salaries, not expenses. Should that be classified?
Yeah, so we, we fixed that in the fiscal year 26 budget, but last year we were paying for our part-time events person out of that line, as well as using that for some consulting work. That was part of our economic development tourism rollout.
Okay. My next question is the transfer station. Is there a plan in place to review the fees to make sure that we are getting closer to breaking even with the transfer station?
So we reviewed the fees a few years ago. Kathy is looking at a big, we're looking at a new scale so we can accurately measure better. So we are looking at fees again, but it probably won't be till after January 1st because we want to close out this year and get six months of new data with Casella to see. But we have seen an uptick at our transfer station, so the more we bring in, the more we push out. But our revenue has been decent out there. So we had an increase in revenue in that line, so we obviously had an increase in expenses.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Luskowitz?
When we, as we're talking about the transfer station, was there, I know I brought this up for years about the possibility of a compactor to maximize tonnage, because we're paying so much per truckload leaving that place and there's so much light refus or whatever, and we can maximize space in these trailers and get more, less loads to land there to, to save on the expense of trucking it out.
So Tim has had a couple of conversations with, we use Casella. I think they're the only show in town about a compactor up there. But we recently, you all approved years ago for the grapple that pushes everything down. So our loads are going up pretty solid with mattresses, we're stacking, and the other recyclables, they're using the grapple. So Tim is in discussion and that will probably be part of when we do our new rates and things like that, as to what, looking at what we're taking in and the weight and the loads and things like that.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Kind of, I'm like, I'm still hoping for, besides the grapple, it does work, but a compactor would be more effective, any weights?
All right. Any, are you all set, Counselor?
I am, thank you.
Okay. All right. Counsel Blackmer has her hand up. Oh, Counsel Blackmer? Yes?
Through the chair to the mayor, you had mentioned that we've made all the adjustments for salaries. Did we also make the adjustment to FICA?
Yes.
Okay, because that's.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Not that it's in fiscal year 26. Right. So when we budgeted in fiscal year 25, we budgeted on our current salaries. And we had, you know, it should have been really a larger number when you look at the salary numbers, but that's what we needed to close the account.
Okay.
The good news is the bottom line was in the black.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Council Paper Number 12,00507, An Order Detailing Internal End Of Year Fiscal 2025 Account To Account Transfers.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Luskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Seven ayes.
Council Paper Number 12,00508, Communication 119 From Mayor Maxi Appointing, Announcing Appointments Of Andrew J. Kazak, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
You are.
To The Conservation Commission As A Reappointment For A Term To Expire On August 1, 2028. And Matthew Davis To The Mass MoCA Commission As A New Appointment Filling The Vacancy Of Robert Davis For A Term To Expire February 1, 2026. I will file my communication. Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, so basically, Mr. Kazak has been a longstanding member of the Conservation Commission. He's moved into the position as chair several years ago. He's a really solid person who does his research and has a long history of conservation and water. I don't want to say Waterworks, but, what's the word? Watershed information.
Okay.
So he's an excellent appointment. And then I'm, I'm really sad but pleased to appoint Matt Davis to fill his, in his father's term, Bob Davis, who passed a few weeks ago. Matt wanted to be able to give back to his community like his father did, and so he's going to fill Bob's term until June 1, 2026, and then we'll see where we are and what's going on.
Okay.
So two, two very good appointments.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Yeah, just a point of clarification to the chair to the mayor. The paper says February 1, 2026.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have, I didn't have my glasses on. February 1, 2026.
Okay.
For Mr. Davis.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, moving on. Any committee reports in minutes? Okay, I have a brief thing from Public Safety. Last night, we met. One of our discussions that we had were regarding the use of fireworks by private individuals. One of the things, we're going to ask the Public Safety Department to be a little more vigilant in patrolling on the night of the 4th or any other time when they have a fireworks complaint. The reason being is that there are many people in the area whose pets and their own persons, possibly those individuals with PTSD and other afflictions, may be very sensitive to the noise. And in some cases, the fireworks are being fired off in, within neighborhoods right next door to where these people live, and it is very, very uncomfortable for these people. So that's all I wanted to report. Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to note that the, the police department is very vigilant on it. When we get complaints, we try to follow up with them as fast as they come in. On the 4th of July, of course, we had our scheduled fireworks, which everyone knew about. And then after that, there was a huge firework display in the Reservoir Road area, which created quite a bit of havoc. And we responded to that. Just today, when I was out in my front yard with my dog, somebody went by and threw those little poppers in the road, and my dog is very sensitive, and I had to chase him almost to Franklin Street. So I, I, I get it. I agree with you, Counselor, but to say if the Public Safety Department could be more vigilant, we can't be any more vigilant than what we are. We hear it, we respond, we get a call, we respond. But if we're working on an overdose or we're working on an accident, unfortunately, that takes priority over firecracker calls. So I, I think we are very vigilant with that. I would change the wording for the community to be more vigilant and be sensitive to not let off illegal fireworks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other community, committee reports? Okay, moving on. Licenses, we have none. Moving on to open forum. It's an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for open forum? Please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
Michael Malazo, 91 Wheeler Avenue. One last thing that I didn't point out before, I've heard the administration say that they have had issues getting people to serve on the Airport Commission. I know several people have applied to sit on that commission, and the mayor has either ignored those requests or flat-out called them and told them, we really don't want you to serve. So at, I would like the, the city council to do a little research on their own and find out what the, what actually is going on out there.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on open forum? Moving forward. Mayor, do you have any updates?
I have plenty of updates tonight.
Okay. So in the event world, just a reminder, we still are having concerts at the lake on Wednesday starting at 6:30. This week is Bang on a Can. Also, Wednesday, August 13th, is our downtown celebration from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. On Sunday, August 24th, is Motto Ramo from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. In addition, please do not forget about Thursday's Party In The Park at Joe Will Field Complex. In the project world, we will start seeing construction on Hudson Herman and Jackson Streets starting August 4th. J.I.H. Maximilian was awarded this contract, and this project is funded through the Community Development Black Graham. Also, the city of North Adams was awarded $888,000 in the fiscal year 25 Community One Stop, which was funded by Mass Works. You will start seeing work on sidewalk reconstruction on Huzick, Blackington, Montana, and Porter. This will enhance public safety and neighborhood accessibility, as well as we will have a few, probably four, new hydrants replaced. Currently, this project was recently bid, and J.I.H. Maximilian was the bid low bidder. I've also received several phone calls about the status of Starbucks. So we are told verbally that the Starbucks project has been put on hold because they have new leadership, and the leadership is looking at all their existing stores before they continue with any new builds. We hope to meet with Colvast in the next couple of weeks, I would say the next three weeks, to discuss what their plans are. We have asked them to button up the site, make sure all the gates are up and everything is cleaned up, which they've done. Bill still has a couple of punch items left for them, but the big world of what's going on, on the site, that's what we've been told by the project engineer on that job, and we hope to have more details to follow in the upcoming weeks. So I just wanted to publicly say that, that's all we know. They did not use the word not coming, they used the word paused. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, liaison updates, counselor updates. All right, Counsel Blackmer?
I just want to remind everybody that there, along with Party In The Park on Thursday nights, there's also events at the Chalet at Mass MoCA, and my understanding is they've added some kid-friendly activities. There's also Studio 9.
There's also Studio 9 at the Porches, which is an incredible studio space. Some events, keep an eye on it if you can, because some events are free and some are, and most of them are reasonably priced if they're not free. I mean, we've got lots of opportunities, things happening in the evenings in the city. Businesses are open. There's, you know, a lot of different options on different nights, as the mayor's already talked about, the concerts on Wednesday and the party in the park, so.
Thank you.
There's things to do.
Yes. And anybody else? Counsel Fitch?
Just how exciting it is to see that the Williamstown Theater Festival has expanded and started utilizing North Adams spaces and how the mayor can cut a ribbon like nobody's business at the Annex. That was two weeks ago, I think. Yeah, anyway, I've just heard really great things about their shows yet. I have not been to them yet in North Adams, but I'm really excited to see, especially the ICE show, as soon as possible. And then one more thing, too, I don't know, I don't think that you mentioned this, Counsel Blackmer, but First Friday is the 1st of August. And on First Fridays, you will find lots of fun little parties and events and businesses that are open a little later than usual in downtown North Adams, so check that out.
Thank you. And I want to commend the team that organized the beach party on Saturday. It went very well. And the DPW team that worked diligently to get the sand down in an appropriate amount of time and the time they spent cleaning it up on Saturday night. They did a very great, very good job and they worked very hard in making this a success. Seems like it was only a short time, but it gave a lot of people a lot of joy and I saw a lot of people having a good time out there that night, so that's what I wanted to say. Quickly, Nizio, do you have anything to add for us tonight?
I do. Just a reminder that papers with signatures for nominations are due next Tuesday, that is July 29th, by 5:00 p.m. The office will be open until 5:00 p.m. next Tuesday.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence. At this point, before we adjourn, I have a card for the councilors to sign for District Attorney Shigru and his wife. At this point, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.